Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of Commissioners, 10 o'clock meeting, February 7th at 2023. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, Marshal Full Creator, your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
Let me just give the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Here.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey. District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Here.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Here. Now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on any other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment for those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment for those who are pre-registered for a WebEx link and currently on the queue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally at against a commission or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will activate. You have one minute left. When your timer is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their timer is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do. Ivan Perez. Yes, please stand at the podium. State your name and address for the record, and then you may begin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ivan Perez, and the address is 38923 Chapman Street. I want to say thank you before God to give me this privilege to be here today. And this is what I need to tell everyone. We purchased a property on 10/20/2020. We hired a tire company and started to do all search links, all documents necessary, and we asked, we called Building Department for records, blueprints, any violation or something. They not provide any record for that. And 11/20/21, we get a letter from the code informants that we have a violation, and they send us information what we need to do. We hired an architect and engineer with license, 11/20/21, and start all the permits necessary to get this project moved. On 2/16, I'm sorry, on 3/20, 3/5/21, we sent an email to all the building chief, and we call Mrs. Esther Oliver because we have a lot of issues to get the right form application, because we have an existing room that will be without permit, but I purchased on the property as it. Okay? We did a construction without permits. I want to say yes. We do the installation of the window. We not get permit for that. We do cabinets. We not get permit for that. And we do tires inside of the shower. We not get the permit with that, about that. Okay? But after that, we hired my engineer, my contractor, architects to try to remedy that. And we searched on the building, I'm sorry, on construction allows, that we can hire private provider to fix that issue and get all the married results. Do I have more time?
Yeah, one moment.
Okay. We get with Mr. Ramon Blanco and tried to solve that issue, and they never allowed us to get a private provider. We need help because from June last year, we get a penalty, I think I start in January something, 20 or January 1st, of $220, $250 every day. What I need to do? I have everything, construction permit, master permit, electrical permit, mechanical permit. I do everything. You can check as record public, and I need help to get this matter done.
Okay. Sally Sherman is in the back. Sally, if you would come up and maybe take this gentleman to the side and talk with him and work with him.
Okay.
All right?
That's us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have no one else signed up in person. I do have two people in queue that signed up for the WebEx. I don't know if you want to ask them.
Anyone, anyone else in the audience that would like to come speak? So we'll close public comment from here, and we should go to WebEx.
Okay. All right. The first person I have signed up in WebEx that's online is Patty April. Hold on just a moment. We're going to elevate you. All right, Ms. April, you should be able to take yourself off of mute and state your name and address for the record, and then you may proceed.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you and see you.
Can you hear you guys?
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. April. We can hear you. I wonder if she's got a volume on her computer. Is it down too low? Ms. April, we can hear you and we can see you. Can you hear us?
I don't know if I can hear anything.
We can hear you. Would you want to, Mr. Chair, do you want to move on to the next person and see?
Yeah, I'm looking at the top of the screen. There's a microphone with a flash beside it. Maybe that's why she can't hear us.
I don't know if it would be a speaker symbol, but it would probably be on her end. Maybe she didn't turn the volume up on her computer.
Okay.
But she, can she hear us?
She can't hear us. We can hear her.
All right, let's go, let's go to the next one. We'll come back to her. We'll try.
Okay. Mr. Peppers, can you elevate Ellie Ardellani? All right, Ms. Ardellani, if you would please take yourself off of mute and state your name and address for the record, and then you may proceed. Ms. Ardellani, we cannot hear you. It looks like you're still on mute. Okay, we see the mute is gone. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then you may proceed. I'm sorry, we still cannot hear you. Ms. Ardellani, we cannot hear you.
And that's not us, because both of them are having the same issues.
No, they were doing actually the same.
Oh, different issue?
Well, Ms.
The first one can talk, but couldn't hear. The second one.
Probably can hear, but we can't hear her.
So what happens in a situation like this? Is someone like calling her or getting a hold of her in whatever means they gave her to remedy so she can get back on, or are they just?
I don't know. It's a question for your staff.
I mean, do you guys connect? Are you guys emailing her or texting her?
I just texted the first one, Patty, so I just told her, go ahead and speak when we come back to you. So let's try going back to her, and then maybe.
All righty.
I'll do the same thing with Ellie.
Mr. Peppers, could you please elevate Ms. April? We're going to allow her to speak, even though she's not able to hear us.
I'm curious what happens when this happens, if we.
This is the first time it's happened.
I don't know. We've had people move on.
We're resetting. We're emailing the participants right now to let them know that we're having some technical difficulties. You know, as far as the order of operations for the meeting, if we want to come back to this and allow them to speak, or, I don't know, that's general order of operations question.
All right, so we just tried Patty and we can get her again?
Well, let's.
I mean, they may, someone may need to speak on consent, so I just, I don't know. So I don't necessarily want to afford.
Both of the, both of the speakers that were signed up did not, appeared did not sign up for anything that was on the agenda. They signed up referencing Meadow Oaks, which, unless you know differently, I don't see on the agenda.
No, nor do I. So perhaps we could move forward while our IT team, it looks like they're resetting and reconnecting with those folks.
Okay. And maybe someone can call them on the phone, talk to them, and then once you think you got it set, then they can bring them back to us. Otherwise, we'll, we'll wait till the break. Okay. All right, so consent agenda? So we're going to close public comment now. Give the option for those people to speak if we can make the connection later.
Okay.
Now is the time for resolutions, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any resolutions. It's just in the consent.
Okay, so we'll leave that be. Okay. And for the consent agenda, I have two items. C-35 is withdrawn, and C-36 has been pulled and revised. Are there any other polls or withdrawals for the consent agenda? If not, may have a motion.
Move motion, the other items on the consent agenda be approved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And Mr. David Allen, 30, C-36?
I did want to add a question on C-14.
Okay.
Just informational.
All right, let's hear this and we'll have the discussion.
Good morning, Chair, County Commissioners, David Allen, Utilities Director. The page eight of the proposed agreement with National Services for the Utilities Dual Check Replacement Program was inadvertently admitted from the agenda package. That missing page included the county standard provisions for compliance with local, state, and federal laws, and no other changes to the proposed agreement are proposed at this time, and staff recommends approval.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so C-14, we already, oh, is it C-14?
Yes.
So we already voted on it, but let's have it discussed on.
Mr. Chairman, who seconded the motion?
Is that?
Commissioner Bradford.
Okay, thank you. Is that the one on Seven Springs, and it's mislabeled, or do I have the number wrong? It says Newport Ritchie, but then it says it's in.
District Five, yeah.
District Five, so I, and it's not working for me to pull up the agenda. Did you get that, please? No. So we can't download the agenda to get the background material up here? So which, which is the fire station that's on here?
TJ Boucher with Facilities Management. That is Fire Station 19. It's an archaeological survey for Fire Station 19 on, trying to think of the road, cross by.
Okay, so that is a District Five thing. That's, so the fires, I'm just getting some chatter about the fire station that's being rebuilt in my district on Seven Springs. So I'll bring that up under Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's yours.
Yeah, thank you.
And Commissioners, we are having an issue with the Board portal on civic clerk. The public view does work if you, if, no?
I can't get public view.
It's working for me, so, okay. We do have IT working into, looking into this as well. Comes in waves, apparently.
Okay, so we'll go to R-43 if we can.
But I don't have anything. Now you only put some of it in.
Yes, we are here early on in the time certain, but everybody's here, right? Okay, then we can go into our presentation.
Excellent.
So Commissioners, I, you have a packet of information that's at your seat, and it includes the annual investment summary report for the year ended September 30th, 2022, as well as the quarterly investment summary report for quarter ended December 31st, 2022, along with a printed out version of the presentation that is up right now on the screen. I'd like to introduce to you probably a familiar face. We have from, I should say, familiar faces. We have with us Matt Lazar. He is the interim Finance Director for my office. Manny Long has resigned and taken a position with the First National Bank of Pasco. So Matt was working as the Assistant Finance Director, and he's doing an amazing job. So he's here today as the interim Finance Director to do part of the presentation. And along with him is Scott Stitcher. He is with PFM Asset Management Group, and he does our investments for us as well. And we have put together the investment summary report before it was just like a one-page busy spreadsheet. And we thought, let's change it up. Let's add more information and explain to you what, what has happened the past year, as well as the last quarter. So here is Mr. Lazar and Mr. Stitcher to go further into the details of that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. So before you, you'll see up here, we're going to go over, first, we're going to start with the quarterly performance for the period ended December 31st, and then we'll go into what Nikki was talking about, the new presentation, more user-friendly format for you guys to kind of look through and look at the investments. This will be the new format going forward. And then if there's any questions, just please feel free to ask, and then any input. It's a document we will update if needed. So, but we'll go ahead and start.
Okay. Good. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to make some brief comments on the economy, and then we'll jump into the portion of the assets that we manage on behalf of the county. And then I'll hand it back to you to finish up. In a nutshell, last year, the Fed was fighting some persistent inflation, and that led them to raise interest rates a total of seven times for 4.25% increase in interest rates in total, taking the Fed Funds Rate today to 4.5 to 4.75%. So in a rising rate environment, that's not a great thing for a fixed income investor. Rising rates lead to falling returns, price decreases. However, in the long term, and that's the money we're talking about here, is long-term operating funds, it's going to benefit you in higher income in the portfolio. So there's some near-term growing pains as interest rates rise, but in the long term, you will be rewarded. We're seeing that already in the portfolio, and we'll get into this a little bit later when we look at the yield at cost on the portfolio, which is, again, the income you're earning on the portfolio, has increased consistently throughout the year, is going to continue to do so as we move throughout 2023. Let me fast forward to this slide. Matt, you want to jump in here?
Yes, sir. So on this slide here, what we are representing to you is the portfolio for the county. This is the unrestricted portfolio. So what you're going to see here is we're showing you the makeup of the different investment avenues. So some of the various local government investment pools in which we are distributing the over $1.4 billion in unrestricted investments, so the surplus funds for the county. You'll see there's been some changes since the last time we presented to you. So speaking to what Scott was talking about earlier, we've started moving some money. The finance team has done a great job. So Richard Van Steen has led that team to really take advantage of the short-term fixed rates. So you will see that in that Florida Palm term, $203 million. So we are trying to take advantage of those so we can make sure to maintain, one, liquidity, but also the operational needs of the county. So being available, those funds being available for use as you guys see fit. Big picture, as Scott was saying, at the tail end of the fiscal year 2022, we saw an uptick for September 30, and we finished with a return of about $8 million. We are already at close to $7.3 million in returns for just the first quarter of our fiscal year. So we anticipate being back in line with the pre-COVID numbers, really maximizing returns, but also maintaining compliance with obviously Florida statute and the investment policy that you guys have approved. Let's see, what else do I have for you? We, again, just being in line with the prior year balances, but I think, as you can see, we're going to continue to monitor this. We work closely with PFM to, we understand return on investment isn't number one in the listing, but we do want to make sure that is there, because we want to make sure that if the capital needs, we've heard loud and clear, capital, big part of the budget, we want to make sure you guys are able to have those expenditures and have the offsetting revenue to budget for that. So that is what we're kind of showing here for you. Obviously, some of the other information, very familiar to you, but if there's any questions, you can just let us know and walk through them. We'll go to the next one, actually, here for you. We'll just roll through. You can continue to hear my voice. So we'll just keep going here. So in the investment policy, and we're going to talk about this later when we go through the breakdown, in the investment policy that the county has approved, there is restrictions on the different pools in which we can invest. So represented on this slide, you will see the gray outlined box. That is the maximum investment percentage of the whole portfolio as approved in that investment policy, with the blue bar filling in showing where we are in line with the investment policy. We did want to really bring to your attention that bottom line, the Florida Prime SBA. In the investment policy, it does allow for a maximum of 25%. You will see for the period ended December 31, we were exceeding that, and that is in line with the ad valorem revenues that the county had received in December. So again, we, we use this graph, and we'll show you later, we're going to incorporate it quarterly to kind of show you, we're going to continue to monitor these so we can maintain a compliance. But that is why you're going to see that 31.7%. It was just timing of revenues that the county had received, so.
Yeah, I'll just add that it's not uncommon this time of year when ad valorems aren't coming in to see cash balances swell. But our conversations with the staff, we were able to redeploy that money and bring you back in compliance. So there are really no concerns there today. I'll just note, too, on our portfolio, again, I'm going to make my comments around that $376 million portion of the assets that you saw on that summary slide. And I think it's important to reiterate something Matt alluded to, and that's the fact that what we do on your behalf is driven by Florida state statute, as well as the county's investment policy. That drives our investment decisions on, on your behalf. Building on the compliance section, this just shows you an issuer diversification to show you that you're, again, in compliance from an issuer limit, as well as from a credit quality standpoint. So there's no concerns from a policy standpoint with regard to issuers or diversification or credit, credit quality. Let's spend a little time on this slide. Again, it is a summary of the portfolio that we manage on your behalf. We ended the quarter at $376,458,000. I want to note the effective duration in the portfolio is 1.64 years versus 1.74 years for the benchmark. Duration serves as a risk measure. It serves as the interest rate sensitivity of your portfolio. So the fact that we are short duration relative to the benchmark would mean that we're taking on less interest rate risk in the portfolio. And we feel like that's prudent in an interest rate environment where we're seeing rates rise. So you're going to continue to see us take a more defensive posture from an interest rate standpoint. I mentioned earlier, the yield at cost, you'll note, it stands at 1.83% at the end of December. It stands at 2.04% today. You're going to continue to see that number tick up as maturities occur, as interest rate, as interest occurs, as paydowns occur in the portfolio. That money will be redeployed into higher yielding securities, and you're going to continue to see that number tick up. So again, at the end of the first quarter in 2022, the yield at cost stood at 0.76% today at 204. And again, why is that important? Because interest in the portfolio makes up a large part of the total return. So we're going to see that interest rate number continue to tick up and benefit this portfolio and the county over the long term. High credit quality, double A for the portfolio, fully diverse. High credit quality, double A for the portfolio, fully diversified, looking at the pie chart in the upper right-hand corner, you can see we're spread across a number of sectors. I do want to point out that we did take action in the third quarter to eliminate the municipal holdings that are outside of the state of Florida. So we sold roughly $2,950,000 in par for municipal bonds. So Chairman Mariano, I'm hoping that that makes you happy.
Every bit of interest helps.
So that is now taken care of. Again, it was about five bonds in total. There was a slight loss that was incurred, but a rounding error when you look at the size of this particular portfolio. Down the bottom right is really just a bar chart that shows you how we get to that effective duration number that I was speaking to a little bit earlier, just a breakdown of how we are, how that 1.64 years is made up. And again, you can see we are overweight the shorter end of the duration distribution, which is a good thing. Again, that means more money is coming due, that we can invest out at higher yields. And then we give you a credit quality breakdown in that lower left-hand corner. Let's get into what you really want to see, and that is performance. We show you performance over the last three months, so the quarter ending December 31st, and then we show you the full year ending December 31st in that second column. So some very good news over the last three months, positive returns. We haven't seen positive returns in the fixed income market since the third quarter of 2021. So it's exciting to be here today to actually be able to deliver positive returns, 0.82% versus the benchmark at 0.73%. You net out a fee of about a basis point for the quarter, and the net of fee return is 0.81%. So about eight basis points of outperformance for the quarter. The story's a little better in terms of outperformance for the year, but in absolute terms, it's not quite as pretty because of the negative number there in front of the return. But a negative 321 for the portfolio versus the benchmark at a negative 365. Net of fees, a negative 326. So about 40 basis points, 0.40% of outperformance there. I just want to stress, you know, although that number is negative, keep in mind the importance of these assets and what state statute says, and that is safety of principal and liquidity first and foremost. So it may seem ugly, but think about an S and P return last of nine, in last year of a negative 19%. And then this sort of, you know, is why you are taking a more conservative approach in investing these assets. So negative 3% is much more palatable than a negative 19%. Let me stop there. I've thrown a lot of information at you in a short amount of time, just see if there are any questions to this point.
Let me just lead with, you know, I think you're right, the short-term market is where we should be going right now. And if, my thinking is, if we need to give you direction to kind of change where we've gone in the past, I'm happy to kind of look to go that way because the short-term market is the highest interest rates. What's the highest interest rate on a CD right now? It looks like it's a 3.85%?
It's probably more than that, depending on how far you're going out.
Okay. So I mean, I think we should be taking, especially if it's CDs, whatever, I don't care if it's six months or a year, if we can put that in there and take advantage of the high rates right now, because if they do drop down next year or two, then the more revenue we can draw in right now, I think we should, and especially it's, being more liquid puts us in a good position for the next move.
Mr. Chair, if I'd like, I'd like Mr. Lazar to talk about some of the strategies he and his team have been implementing on the short term, talk specifically directly to what you're saying.
Okay.
So I think great minds think alike, I'm going to say, because we have done that, we've been looking at that. So that's back to that Florida Palm fixed rate. Those are very short-term, giving us a fixed rate. The last one we participated in is a 5.14% return. And then we also are working with finalizing some items related to CDs, where we're averaging about 4.25% return on those CDs. So we are in line with you, and we will continue to monitor those. That has been a bulk of what the Treasury team has done, but we will continue to look into those, so.
And those are the safest investments for us to be in as well, correct?
They are, they are safe, and we're going to get, we're fixed rating that, so we're knowing what we're going to get, we have an expectation, so we wouldn't see a loss on there.
I mean, for the years that we struggled with the down economy, the low interest rates, right now is an opportunity for us to maximize this return. So I like that approach. I think it's good to keep on going. And if you need flexibility from us, how we've said the portfolio should be, I think we can say that if we look at it, safer is better, which would be shorter terms. So if I needed, if you need direction from us, I think to structure, I hope you ask for it.
So I feel that the portfolio, the policy for investment gives us the latitude to do that, and we are taking advantage of that. One thing that they balance is if they take money out of long-term now, they have to make sure that we're not doing it at a loss.
Right.
Right? So they're investing the money, taking it out of long-term, where we're not going to get hit with a loss, and then reinvesting that in short-term to take advantage of those higher yields.
You'll know when to take, when's the right time to take the right ones out.
Yep. And again, I think you're really going to see that in our next performance on, in the next quarter, you'll see more in line, kind of, we will have the CDs reflected on there and a lot of those short-term gains showing up, so, yep.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Honestly, I really didn't have a whole lot more as far as prepared remarks, but I'm happy to address any other questions that might exist. Now, I'll just point out, too, keep in mind that, you know, the longer-term portfolio is sort of like steering an aircraft carrier. So I mentioned that yield of cost ticking up each quarter, and at some point, that's going to be a really, really attractive yield. And the other thing to keep in mind is, when interest rates do start to fall, money market or short-term yields fall much quicker than what you'll see in this portfolio. So the goal here is to lock in higher yields for a longer term, so you continue to maximize that income and return. But we continue to have those conversations on what the right mix of liquidity is and long-term investments are. So that's, you know, the beauty of working with the county staff is that the lines of communication are very open, we meet quite frequently. And again, you know, with the interest in mind of maximizing the overall portfolio, the county's total assets, so.
Very good. Commissioner Stark, you had a question?
I just want to say, when I got this the other day and I went through it, I did look at who we were invested with, and if you remember in the past, we had a little angst for our new board members. I can't remember, we were with something in New York City.
New Jersey Turnpike.
New Jersey Turnpike, and, you know, some things that probably we didn't want to be in. So I'm glad to see it. I couldn't find one that I said, we'd want to say, get us out of there.
That's right.
Not that I'm an expert, but, yeah, so, thank you.
We appreciate your maximizing investment. We do know it's a big ship to churn, and sometimes you've got to look at when you can get out, but I'm glad you're taking care of these short-term opportunities that are in front of you now, the expired ones that make it easy to make the shift. But I think, I think your approach is going great, so thank you for listening to us about the previous investments as well.
Absolutely. Our pleasure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great day.
You, too.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So the next thing we have is an 1115 Times Certain. Any luck on the citizens?
Yes, they are going to call then.
Correct. So we'll go ahead and give the first person a call. I think we're going to use this phone here. Eric, do I just put a microphone up?
Hey, Patty.
Yeah?
Hi, it's Joanna Cheshire from Pasco County, which is Dixon.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. You are good to go?
Can you ask her to state her name and address for the record?
You, actually, Patty, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I can. So my name's Patty April, Patricia April, Illinois. I live at 13223 Newport Shores Drive here in the Lakeside Community of Hudson. And I'm speaking today on behalf of the Meadow Oaks Development Project that's going to start behind me.
Okay, she may proceed.
You may proceed.
Thank you. So my house was built a year ago, and when selecting the lot to build my home on, I knew I wanted one that had some privacy in the back, with no houses behind me and the views of nature. So when looking at the lot, I selected what was called a premium lot by our builder, which cost me several thousand dollars more for the lot. While I can't change what the builders did to us, they did sell us so-called premium lots, stating they would never have homes directly behind us. My lot in particular has this one amazing tree, and I know I'm not on camera now, but I was hoping you could see the view. It is the focal point from the center of the property. We have a lot of alligators, one sunbath, actually, at the bottom of my property in the saint, in the grass. We have gopher turtles and birds and deer and whatnot. It's very peaceful. So getting to my point in why I'm speaking, like many of my neighbors, I was willing to pay the extra money for my lot to have this wonderful ambiance behind me. It's all going to be destroyed when the Meadow Oaks project starts. While I realize what I was told by my builder was a lot, and it's of no concern to the Meadow Oaks Development Project, I want to offer up something to think about. So if my neighbors and I were all willing to pay the extra money for our lots because of this privacy, don't you think future homeowners of Meadow Oaks would also be willing to pay more for the luxury of their privacy? A study by the Department of Horticulture of Michigan State University, published in 2005, based on 16 different markets nationally, found that home values increased by 5% to 10% with privacy trees and landscaping. List with Clever, which is a real estate listing firm, in August of 22, wrote that home values increased with privacy trees embedded in the landscaping by 7% for medium size and up to 11% for larger properties. And if we consider the environment, it is a scientific fact that trees will improve the air quality by filtering out harmful dust and pollutants such as carbon monoxide. Trees also provide shade that help reduce energy bills, which we know are high here in our hot summers. So tearing down all the trees reduces our home value, but it also can affect the future home values of those, of the properties going in Meadow Oaks. Additionally, the cost to tear down and remove all the trees could be hugely reduced. So for all these reasons, I'm appealing to you today to retain at least a minimum of 20 feet depth of the trees from the property line between our communities. It isn't much, but it will be something that both sides can appreciate. Please provide a sum of the privacy we paid dearly for, and in return, those lots on your side get to be sold for more money for the very same reason that we paid for our lots here, and that's the privacy. And that's all I wanted to say today. I should be about three minutes in.
Yes, it's perfect.
Next one?
Thank you. Hi, is this Ellie?
Yes, it is.
Hi, Ellie, it's Joanna Cheshire calling from Pasco County. We're ready to take your public comment. If you'd like to start by stating your name and address for the record.
Yes, good morning. My name is Ellie Ardalani, and my address is 13927 Nesbit Court, Hudson, Florida. And I reside in Lakeside Community. I'm sorry, there's such an echo on the line, so I hear myself.
I know, it's distracting, but we can hear you fine.
Okay. The reason for my participation, me and my husband, this morning is we built this house two years ago, and we chose this lot specifically because of all the trees behind us. And shame on us to believe our builder, when we purchased this lot, that that area behind us was a natural conservation, and nobody would build back there ever. We recently found out that that was not the case, that there is a development going up behind us called Meadow Oaks Development. All the lots have already been designed, and they're, I'm not sure exactly when, but they are going to build right behind us. And the way it's going to be, it's going to be our backyard to the backyard of the lots on, in Meadow Oaks. I'm not here to shame, again, shame on us for believing our builder, but my request is, if there is a way that the developer could leave a line of trees between us and the lots behind us, just for privacy purposes, rather than all of us looking into each other's homes, and, and I think it would make even their lots more attractive if there are tree lines, rather than joining backyards. And, and I think it would cost the developer less if they leave some trees, rather than having to spend money to take everything down. And not to mention, some of these birds and, you know, nature would have some home, rather than having all their homes destroyed. So we had requested to meet with the developer and the builder, but we were not granted that meeting, so that's why me and all my neighbors that, all alongside of Nesbit and Newport Drive, Newport Shore Drive, we are all going to be facing lots behind us, so that's why we are here, and hoping that maybe you commissioners could hear this and somehow help us to achieve that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there anyone else that was going to be calling?
I don't know if they're on cue.
I know we just had the two that were active. There was a third one, I thought, so I'll list it, but I don't see it. Field not completed.
Mr. Chairman, we have four more individuals.
You have four more?
They are. It's okay with you all.
Hello?
Hi, is this Tanya?
Yes, it is.
Hi, Tanya, it's Joanna Cheshire calling from Pasco County. I'm calling for your public comment. We're having a little bit of technical difficulties.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you for calling.
You can go ahead and start by stating your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, it's Tanya Drumheller, and I live at 13327 Newport Shores Drive, Hudson, Florida, 34669.
You can proceed.
Okay. I would just like to submit to keep a 20-foot tree line between us in Lakeside and the Meadow Oaks community. We bought this property because of the trees. We were told it was preserved by the builder. We do love seeing all the animals, and it's heartbreaking seeing the animals being displaced all over the area in general, and I know that that comes with growth, but we do need to be conscious as possible. I know what I'm asking for, no one is able, really to do, for some reason, it's to put people over profit. And unfortunately, I know that that, no one cares but those of us affected by this. So with that, I would like... So, with that, I would like the builder to try, or the, to, whoever is doing this, to consider that we paid extra for this lot, um, for the property because we were told it was preserved. So, we just wanted to say that, um, I would assume that your buyers would, for these houses, would do the same and they probably want some trees also. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do I just hang up or is there anything else I need to do?
Yes, we can hang up. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye. This is Denise.
Hey Denise, it's Joanna Cheshire calling from Pasco County.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
We're having some technical difficulties, so I'm calling you for your public comment.
Oh, I don't have public comment. I'm just a, you know, I work here, so I, I always listen to the board that way. I don't do a livestream because there's always a delay, so.
Oh, I apologize. I have you sign up for public comment.
Denise, county employee.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Okay, one more.
Hello?
Hi, is this Rosemary?
Yes.
Hi, this is Joanna Cheshire calling from Pasco County. You had signed up for public comment?
Yes.
Um, we would love to hear from you now if you want to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, do I do it on my phone?
Uh, yeah, no, this is fine because we're having technical difficulties, so everyone on the board will be prepared.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Um, my name is Rosemary Robinson and I live at one-three-one-five-seven Newport Shores Drive in Hudson.
You can proceed.
Okay, so, um, my backyard faces the trees that the builders are planning to, uh, cut down. And, um, I moved in last August and one of the selling factors was the view from my backyard. Um, I was assured by my builder, Inland Homes, that the trees would always remain there and the, um, homes, uh, will never be built. So, that was a great, uh, plus in my decision to buy the home. Um, I know that the building project is moving forward despite this and I asked the new builders to please retain a line of trees for us here at Lakeside. Um, it'll also be, um, beneficial for the builders financially by not cutting down all the trees and their new homeowners will also have their privacy as well as the homeowners here at Lakeside. And that's all I have.
Can I ask her a question?
Uh, we have a question for you.
Mrs. Starkey.
Okay.
Do you have any trees that you have, do you, did you save any trees in your backyard?
Did you hear the question?
No, I didn't.
The question is, did you save any trees in your backyard?
I have one tree in my backyard, but the view past the pond that is there are all trees. It's just gorgeous.
And did your neighborhood save any trees along the buffer between your property and the property next to you?
Did your neighborhood save any trees along the buffer between your property and the property next to you?
Yeah, there are all, uh, all the trees are there. Nothing's been cut down.
Uh, in your neighborhood?
What about in your neighborhood?
Um, no, no trees have been cut down.
No. What are you asking for the question?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I'll ask it again. What's the name, what's the name of your neighborhood, Meadow?
It's called Lakeside Community.
Okay, did your, did Lakeside Communities leave a buffer of trees between your property and the next door property? That's what I'm asking.
Yes, what, what's happening is our whole entire block has a pond and then past that are all trees. So, that's the view that we're looking at and some, some of the homeowners were even charged more for buying their home because of that view.
Thank you. I'm just gonna go to the property crazers website for my answer. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Terry?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Terry, if you, if you would, I'd like to get with you on this. We'll kind of look at the two neighborhoods back-to-back, get with the people. It's my district, so, uh, maybe I'll be meeting up with the people, but let's go take a look and do a little research first. Okay? Thank you. All right, that's the end of the public comment. I'm noticing the line. Okay. All right, so now we're gonna go to committee reports. Commissioner Oakley.
Yes, sir. I have just a couple of things today. Uh, first item I'd like to cover is, uh, I would take this opportunity to, it's been probably seven or eight months that our, our new administrator's been in office and working for us and, uh, I'd like to thank him for the job he's doing, the leadership he's shown in Pasco County to continue our growth and keep us in the right direction without a bump in the road and, uh, I only appreciate everything that you've done to help staff and all lead us into that direction. And I think you've done a great job and I just want to applaud you for that, so. Certainly appreciate all you've done while you've been our administrator.
All, all credit to the team, sir, but thank you for the kind comments.
Uh, the next item I'd like to, um, talk about is, uh, the respect we should give each, each of ourselves in our own districts. In other words, if, um, when I came into office and ran, I visited a lot in, uh, District Five and Mr. Marion's district and then at the time it was Mike Wells in District Four and different ones and, um, I had a lot of respect for them and what they wanted in their districts and thought it was very important that we continue that. We got two new members now, so I think it's important that we understand that and respect each, each of our districts because we spend, we live in our districts, we were voted to serve and, and we've made that oath to be in our districts and live in our districts, so those districts, uh, take special issues from each of us for our districts to do the right thing. So, I want to be sure that we don't go in someone else, some other commissioner's district and cause any issues or anything that's not really in line with that district's opinion of how she wants things or he wants things to go, so that we don't, uh, we need to be there and we need to know what they're wanting in their districts because we all need to work together to be able to support each other when the right thing comes along to be in different districts. Because everything doesn't happen, happen in, a lot of things are happening in my district now, but y'all also have things happening in your district, so I always try to make sure I know what it is that you're working on in a sense, and the only time we can talk is during this time about any of these issues, so I just want to make sure we just have a mutual respect for each other and then when it comes about somebody's district, in other words, um, just an example, Seth's come on board. He's originally a Dade City person and all. Um, he's, I think, working along with, and I'm aware of it, with Boys and Girls Club, which is in my district and that's understandable, but we want to make sure that he doesn't do something in my district that I'm not aware of that wouldn't fit what I really want for my district. And, and so I respect him for what he wants in his district. I, in this case, he's only been here, I think this is your, yeah, two months and he's only been here one month, but I've heard him speak of the Boys and Girls Club and some other things in my district. But I like to know sometimes what he's doing in his district too, where he lives and where he's, he serves the county commission, so I think we all need to be, uh, give each other that mutual respect that, that they working in their districts and you, this is a time when you talk, when you do things uh, in your district and you visit different ribbon cuttings or ground breakings all in your district. This is the time you let us know what's going on in the district, some of those issues. We all get those messages to be there, whatever, but when it's your district that that's happening in, you should speak out about it and, and the good things that are coming about your district, so, um.
Commissioner, can I?
Yes, Mrs. Starkey.
You know, I, I was trying to figure out a way to bring something like this up too and I, and I want, and, you know, we're all elected countywide and, um, there are many issues that go countywide. Um, for example, I like to deal with court training and I'm working on expanding AM skills throughout the county and it would go into some of your other districts. Um, but I, uh, so sometimes we do do things that happen in other districts. Um, and I think we need to give ourselves the, I mean, that's okay. I mean, we, we all work for the county, but I, I will tell you where I do draw a line in is when a commissioner, uh, when someone tries to do something in my district or really anywhere that's against our ordinances. And so, um, I, I've had this problem in the past where someone knows somebody and they don't want to do the landscape ordinance, they don't want to follow the sign ordinance. You know, I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay with that anywhere in the county. Uh, but, but I especially am not okay with that in my district, especially the parts where I'm trying so hard to bring it back up because so much of it has fallen, is falling down. So, please don't come into my district and try, because you know somebody, whatever, to do something that's against what our ordinances say.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, um, to continue a little bit.
Yeah.
In that fact that I care about trails and I like trails in my district, but I actually give that, um, kudos and stars out for Commissioner Starkey because she works very hard at trails. And so, regardless of my district, I have no problem with her working with trails. I don't have to worry about trails too much, so she's gonna, she's gonna follow and make sure it's gonna be a trail, so.
Hey, I need to.
And it goes all over the county. But I'm in support of her doing that. I, I like trails. I think people ought to be using trails more for their bike riding, things like that, rather than a highway. We got a lot of busy traffic, uh, coming about and, uh, in and around, especially in the eastern part where a lot of bicycle, like riding the hills and curves around here. But it's very dangerous. And so, when you go to trails, I really would like to see more ride trails because it's safer. Um, and with that, I got one more item.
Can I just touch on the two though? Just was in the subject for a second longer?
Do you want to?
I want to, I want to stay on the subject just for a second though as well.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I think, you know, Commissioner Starkey, you make a great point. We are elected countywide. We need to know what's going on. Sometimes citizens come out and they reach out and ask for advice, whatever. Um, sometimes it could be simple as a pothole or something like that. And I always try to defer those things to the district commissioner. We've got a great team. Each one of us have a great team that are working hard and I think very effective for our people, so I don't want to get stuck in minutia. Sometimes you'll get a bigger issue. When we did redistricting, uh, back a little while ago, one of the things of the districts I wanted to hang on to was that district down in Summer Tree, which, you know, we spent, I've spent a lot of time, I've gone to Tallahassee, fought for water, fought for the rates, had a lot of great success. I wanted to make sure if they needed help, I was still gonna be their district commissioner. But Commissioner Oakley, you made a statement that I thought was fantastic. He said, "Look, we're all working on things for the county the best we can for everywhere across the board. And if we're involved in a situation, even within another commissioner's district, I don't think any of us have a problem if it's something that we've got some expertise, some health experience to kind of make that step forward." So, I'm very careful, I think, to kind of avoid another commissioner's district. I really try to push it away when I can. Sometimes there's a little more dialogue going on, such as some items coming up maybe later on today, that I think are important to get input on to what I think. Because they do, when people come to us, they come to see all of us too, so we're still gonna be versed. So, um, I, I think you're right that district commissioners should be able to, you know, have that impetus, that extra emphasis of what they want to do. But every one of our decisions needs to be what's best for overall of the county.
That's right.
But the, your leadership when you got on, and, and I'm gonna tell you, when you came here and we were working with the flooding that was coming in all over the place, you're being boots on the ground over in, uh, Griffin Park. Because you were there, over there, and I'm over here at Beacon Woods and my water level's going down, Griffin Park's going up, we were able to find out there was a problem in the middle. So, I think it's all of us working together, the way this is all designed, to talk things through, to go through things, to make this all great. So, and your leadership has been great with that, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll give you another example of, uh, working in another person's district. I had a project that, with Swift Mud actually, that, uh, dealt with Hidden Lake. And that's Commissioner, uh, Wells' district at the time. And I, so I went and asked him about if I could work on that. Not talk about the project, but ask that, if he mind, I had a project that would possibly save flooding of homes up to about sixty homes if we could hold water back in that area and, and so, so it's kind of been, they've really done a lot of research on it and it hadn't come to be yet, but anytime we can save flooding waters from going into someone's house, we've done a great job that day. So, that's the worst feeling you ever have, is you have water entering your house that shouldn't be there, so. But, and I'll end with one, one other thing, so. Since I was elected, we had four hundred and some million dollars worth of, uh, FDOT projects happening here in, in East Pasco or Pasco County, across the county. And actually, uh, today, they have over seven hundred million dollars in still in roads and all happening, a lot of it happening in East Pasco County. But one of the first roads was fifty-six, fifty-four, all the way across the county was one of the first times we've had a complete four-lane road go one side to the other of county. But with that, I'd like to bring everybody's attention to a reroute of Highway Fifty-two. It's planned right now that that will open up for two lanes, one each way, one east, one west, to happen on, uh, February seventeenth. So, hopefully that date will show up and be the right date and you'll start having a new route. It'll change the way people think about some things because I'm, I'm thinking that some of San Anuels tend to dry up on traffic backups and all because that road's gonna take them straight through to other areas and spread that traffic out, so it'd be better for our public and for our citizens, but. Uh, with that, that's all I have today and, uh, I appreciate all of y'all, uh, working together.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Whaven.
Excellent. Well, I guess I'll start off with a list of happy birthdays. Andy Taylor, happy birthday. Joanna, happy birthday. Cherry downstairs, happy birthday. I think Marie had a birthday recently.
No, coming up.
Coming up. Well, happy early birthday. So, happy birthday to all those folks in the building. Um, do you have a picture, Andy?
Yeah, they have it.
So, we had a pretty awesome weekend. So, over the weekend, or, uh, we had Bay Care Hospital, Wesley Chapel, kick off its almost full opening. It's a great group there. And, uh, the board members are, it's a great board with members from around the, the region, the Tampa Bay area. And, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a really nice hospital. When, when you first walk in, uh, you don't get the sense that it's a healthcare facility. It's very comfortable and, uh, welcoming and you know that that group's there to make life better.
I see Commissioner Susan LaValle in that picture.
There's a, there's a good group at, uh, at the soft opening. Uh, so pretty neat that Bay Care, Bay Care's made a, some two-hundred-and-forty-plus-million-dollar investment uh, in our community and so congratulations to them. And also, it was delayed, but Advent Health, Wesley Chapel, celebrated ten years, uh, in business, uh, in Pasco. So, two strong healthcare facilities, uh, working on their milestones.
Could I add something to your statement about Bay Care? Uh, of course, they're across the street from Advent Health and we certainly appreciate both hospitals, been in Pasco County. But you know, the recipient of them being there and them, um, I guess, challenge each other for, for the best care, that we have recipients, citizens of Pasco County to receive better care because of that competition. And it's, it's a good thing for our county to have two hospitals, both, um, working for the same thing faithfully to, uh, give us better health here in Pasco County and help work with our citizens, so. I thank them for opening that facility. That's all.
Coming a long way. It, uh, Pasco has seemingly become a medical hub with Moffitt coming in and these new hospitals. So, it's, it's, it's really nice to see these significant businesses coming in to help create a good quality life for us. Uh, next up, the follow-up on conversation last week with the Wesley Chapel District Park and soccer fields and. and soccer fields and everything associated with that. No parks is working with Wesley Chapel Athletic Association and the other agency that's looking to take advantage of those, of those fields. I think they're coming to an agreeable solution, and the current kind of delegation of authority is to have the Parks Director sign the agreement, but I'd like to make a motion to move that over to the county administrator's office and let the county administrator broker that deal in his office directly. I think it's, it's just better that we, we start looking at this situation from a more of a procurement perspective, because it's a significant county asset, and we need to make sure that we're managing that county asset for the best interests of our community. So when you have big money coming in wanting to use your fields, I think we need to look at most qualified and have some sort of formal procurement process to manage that situation. It's a good problem to have, because that means, hey, we have a lot of need for our fields, and I think it's just part of growing pains, and so I'd like the entertainer to ask the board to support having the administrator's office kind of take the helm.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, and I'll just, any more discussion on the subject?
Go ahead, Chair.
Any more discussion? No, I'd just say with Keith. Go ahead, Commissioner Starkey.
Yeah, it's a, I guess you could say it's a good problem to have, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands the history of what has happened here as we go forward, because there was a very vibrant soccer program at Wesley Chapel Athletic Association and other sports as well. We're only talking, the main issue right here is soccer, but I can tell you, my own assistant has to go play flag football in Pinellas County, because they can no longer use the fields, Mitchell Field, for flag football, because it's all contracted for soccer, and that's not okay. So, but there were, there was a very vibrant, and I have a Division One soccer player in the family, played soccer at Air Force Academy, married to a national soccer player, so my husband and I have coached for 25 years, many, many different kinds of teams, so I got some pedigree, a licensed soccer coach in this arena. But I recall, Jack, you were here at Wesley Chapel Athletic Association, which was great that they stepped up and took over handling all different kinds of sports on the west, on the east side. They left, they took 400 soccer kids and left Wesley Chapel Athletic Association and went to Radsports and started playing on fields that were not soccer fields. Those were events, event space, so some of this pain has been brought on, you know. But the fact of the matter is, at the end of the day, I think we brought the pain on because we didn't have adequate funding for parks. And so this is just gonna get worse until we do something quick, so. With that, I'm gonna support your motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yeah, Wesley Chapel Athletic Association, they've been 17, 18 years, something, they do a, that group does a fantastic job, and they're not just running soccer, they have six other lines of sports business essentially that they run, and, you know, you're not gonna be 100% all the time, and I think, you know, they do a good job for that, the park system there, they put a lot of time and effort, a lot of investment from the community, and so, you know, as the game of soccer has increased in Pasco, I think it's just one bite at a time, and us revamping our policy on how field time is managed. You know, we have egg on our face, too. We're behind on building our fields at Wire Grass Range Sports Campus. It's expressed my concern with staff on county, on the county being behind on that. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a growth problem, so I appreciate everybody supporting to take a look, that way we can show our kids.
All it takes is a lot more money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To get that done.
So I'll, I'm gonna support the motion, but I just want to say that I, I'm pretty sure that Keith Wilder's working very closely with Mike Carbella as he makes, makes these decisions anyway, so whether we made this motion, and I think Mike is gonna be on top of what's gonna happen anyway.
Yeah.
And I think it's important that we let, let these things work, and frankly, it's probably not a bad idea to have a, maybe another, a workshop or a presentation sometime of the future of the parks, as far as what we're doing next, anyway. But again, with what we have going on, it's been busy, when growth, sometimes the fields lag, but I think it's gonna be important, and I think Keith's got a pretty good plan to work it forward to go from here.
Yeah.
Call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. Then the last, my last item, it's a sensitive one. Not sure, I'm, everybody probably saw recently about the Sheriff Fernando in Pasco and trafficking case, 16-year-old out of, based out of Pasco County Gentleman's Club, and it's a, we have a true case now where we've seen a child be brought into that environment and the worst possible scenarios occur. And so started looking into what are, what are our rules for these X-rated businesses in our, in our county? And so I'd like to, with your support, have a county attorney look into some sort of reporting requirement. If this is the type of business that we're going to have here, I think it's, I think it's important that we, we know kind of how that business is operating. In the garbage business or any other business, you have to report a significant amount of information about your employees, report information to the county and the people that you're serving. In Jacksonville, for example, I think you have to be 21, I read an article, Florida Politics, you have to be 21 to get into these facilities. So I'd like to come up with a more stringent process on managing these facilities, and also have it include the, the stores that sell the products that go into it. I think they're both kind of related, is into a gateway, and so looking for support and having our county attorney to really put some teeth into our ordinance to, to reel these establishments in, that way we don't have another incident, or try to avoid another incident as serious as this one.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. County Attorney.
Be happy to look at what others are doing, I will, but I will say this will take a pretty significant revamping of the way you regulate sexually oriented businesses in Pasco, because right now, there is no permitting requirement. What is, what is required is a zoning, the ordinance is a zoning ordinance. So we can go in that direction, but you're not, you don't have the infrastructure in place to go in that direction now. So that's, that's just a heads up, not that I don't want to do it, or I'm not doing it, but, but you, you're gonna have to, it's gonna be staff, it's gonna be, you know, it's going to be a departure from the way we had regulated these businesses.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, I think that effort is well worth it. So I'm fully supportive of doing what we need to do and revamping the process. I think that juice is well worth the squeeze. I think if there's litigation, it's worth the time and money and effort to go into it. Pasco County is a vibrant place, and we have a lot of great things happening here, and as we move towards a healthy Pasco and a vibrant community, I think this is something that this, this board instruct our county attorney's office to, to really look into and, and come up with a better policy on this, these businesses.
If I could, if you don't mind, Alex, I see you in the back from the Sheriff's Office, would you mind coming up? I want to ask you about what, what happened to the place at the Gentleman's Club that had the 16-year-old. What was done to them, to punish them, if there was anything, or is there something you could recommend we, we do in the future to set up with a law?
Because we have closed down some of these.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alex Hall, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer for the Pasco Sheriff's Office. So to your question, Mr. Chairman, there's a limit to what I can say as far as, because it's an ongoing case, but can I ask, can you restate your question again?
So I just found out, it's at the Gentleman's Club on US-19?
Uh, we're, I'm not gonna say.
So to wherever it was.
Oh, I thought it was called it.
Because of having a 16-year-old person working in that building, was anything done to the owners of that building?
Yeah, so that's actually, that particular part of it is part of an ongoing investigation right now, so that's part of, that's the part that I can't talk about.
So let's not be specific, then. What can be done to a place that would have a 16-year-old working in it? What, what type of things can you do?
Certainly, so, Mr. Chairman, that would be part of the investigation. They'd look into what was known, if it was known that the person had, had lied about their age, if it was known that they had an ID, didn't have an ID, and even at that point, the statute's clear, doesn't even necessarily need to, you don't need to know the person's age, just that if they are a minor and they're engaging in those acts, then there's a, then there's a crime being committed. So that's, that would be part of the investigation, where our deputies will be looking into, and detectives will be looking into what was known, what wasn't known, and, and kind of going forth on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Bishop Bradford.
I'm sure the Sheriff's Office, and I know I'm absolutely aware of the sensitive nature of your investigation, but is Rico being considered in any of these situations? Seizing the asset, seizing the land, seizing the building?
That's a, that's a great question, Commissioner. I don't have the latest on that, if that is being considered, but I certainly can share that with our folks to, to ask them to look into that. The only thing I'd say, as far as looking at additional charges of things of that nature, that would also lie with the state attorney's office as well. So we investigate it, and then for bringing of charges, that would, that lies with the state attorney's office. But I would be happy to share that as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Starkey.
So I worked on this, this ordinance when I was on the Corps of Citizens Ordinance Review Committee back in the day, and I remember when we tried to ban total nudity, we couldn't because of all our nudist places, but we did find a way to, I think, stop a proliferation by zoning them to industrial areas only, and we, I don't think we've had a new one open up since we did that. So, but, and there have been some that have been closed because of action that Sheriff has had to take. But you, you did say something that set off a little alarm with me, and I'd like to research this. When you say, if they didn't know she was 16, I don't care. I don't care. If we go in and we find someone's underage, whether they knew it or not, if she gave a fake ID, I'd like to ban slam the book at them. And so that's something that we have to work on the legislature to fix, because they'll always say we didn't know. I mean, that, I mean, how easy is it to say, she showed us a fake ID? I just think it needs to be more stringent.
Commissioner, if I could just jump in on that real quick, I do want to make sure I clarify what I said earlier. So to your point on that, and the sheriff did talk about it with the AG when they had the press conference, in this case, you know, it doesn't matter if they say they didn't know.
Yeah.
The statute is clear on it, the mere fact that she's a minor, the statute doesn't delineate whether or not they knew or not.
Okay, and if she showed a fake ID, you're not.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't matter.
Yes, ma'am.
So Alex, maybe we could set something up, maybe the next board meeting, you can kind of do, let's go talk this through a bit. Commissioner Waitman, thanks for bringing it up. I will tell you, with just raising two girls, which, as you talk about birthdays, my daughter Lauren had her birthday yesterday, and she just got engaged yesterday. So to have two girls going through and both finding great husbands or future husbands, I'm delighted to go through the process. And one of the things, we had to drive by almost every day at some point, was driving down this place called Pure Pleasure across from Beacon Woods, and looking at that every day. And sadly, when Amber was a representative on a sting operation, we went around to check out all these places out, Amber went into one of those places and saw all the stuff and the drug paraphernalia, and we did some sting, but they're still there. So as we talk about this with you, as far as what can be done, and maybe we need to work together with the state legislator, this is a big issue, and I think with all the illegals coming over the border that are coming in, that are being trafficked, it's, it's more and more and more, maybe there's something we can go to get rid of these places. And it may be even, that we could even take a look at, and I've mentioned this a couple of times before to other folks, and I kind of like the idea, is maybe we can even try to put some incentives to go have these places, if they convert to a regular type of business or something else, we give them some type of tax incentive, or some type of thing to make it financially worthwhile, to shut down that business, because once it's shut down, it can't come back again. And maybe something like that is something we can do as well as a commission to kind of find out, how do we squash this out? Because I'd much rather deal with a problem of having too many kids that want to play soccer in fields and on that fields, than having to worry about one kid getting stuck on a two-week jaunt by some drug person to go take that girl away like that and just ruin her for two weeks of her life that she may never get back and is gonna be scarred for life. So if we could work on that, that'd be great.
Can I bring something to your attention? And I, I've mentioned this to our code, but I know they're very, very busy. I have one in my district at Grandin 54. We, we thought we were gonna be able to shut it because it got hit by a car, and it damaged the building, and it was closed for months, and if one of these is closed for six months, we can close it. But apparently, even though it was closed and there were never any cars there, they were able to show tax receipts during that time and were able to reopen. And I see now, it's now called the Red Room, and one of the big things about that place is they've, I was been told they have a room there that everyone calls the Rape Room, which is lovely. But where I want code to get involved in is, is they have broken into the property, someone has taken down the fence into that property owned by Walmart Corporation next door, and so the parking lot has illegally expanded into the field behind it. So if we could keep them from parking 50 extra cars on a Saturday night, perhaps it won't be so lucrative.
Okay.
And so I'd really like code to look at that, or the Sheriff's Office or someone, and take in those people, tow them.
And if you want to bring more of that on committee reports, let me just, end committee reports, are you good with yours?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Okay, all right, so we'll come, we'll come back after the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I just wanted to say for the record also, for Commissioner Waitman's, what his motion is and what he's working on, we certainly would not oppose any of that, so, but if you have any questions from the law enforcement side as we go forward, I'll be happy to help.
We'll look for you at the next meeting, come back with some ideas what we can do. But we're gonna take, we're gonna take a...
Mr. Chairman, there's a process you have to go through.
I know.
Okay.
So county attorney, would you go over the process for the closed attorney-client session we have coming up?
Mr. Chairman, I desire the advice of the Board of County Commissioners concerning the case of Nikki Alvarez-Souls, Clerk and Comptroller, Pasco County, Florida versus Pasco County, case number 51-2021-CA-2635-CAAXES, Florida Circuit Court, Sixth Judicial Circuit, to discuss settlement negotiations and strategy related to litigation, and for that reason, I request a private attorney-client meeting. If the board approves, you should open the private attorney-client meeting and announce the commencement of an estimated length, the estimated length of the private attorney-client meeting and the names of the persons attending. At the conclusion of the private attorney-client meeting, the board's public meeting should be reconvened, and you should announce the termination of the private attorney-client meeting. The entire private attorney-client meeting will be reported by a certified court reporter, and the transcript thereof will be made a public record upon conclusion of the litigation. I estimate that the attorney-client meeting will last approximately 45 minutes. We have scheduled a certified court reporter to be in attendance in the Commissioner's Conference Room on the first floor for the private attorney-client meeting. I hereby announce the commencement of a private attorney-client meeting, at which the board will discuss settlement negotiations and a strategy related to litigation expenses in the case of Nikki Alvarez-Souls, Clerk and Comptroller, Pasco County, Florida versus Pasco County, case number 51-2021-CA-2635-CAAXES, Florida Circuit, Sixth Judicial Circuit. The names of the persons expected to attend the private attorney-client meeting are Chairman Jack Mariano, Vice Chairman Ron Oakley, Commissioners Catherine Starkey, Gary Bradford, and Seth Waitman, the County Attorney Jeff Steinsteiner, and the County Attorney Mike Carbella.
County Administrator.
County Administrator, sorry. County Administrator Mike Carbella, outside counsel Gregory Stewart, and a court reporter. The estimated length of the private attorney-client meeting is approximately 45 minutes. The private attorney-client meeting will now convene in the Commissioner's Conference Room.
All right, 15 minutes. All right, fifteen minutes, just a little late.